It is now seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the Johnson City Council Meeting, number 25-15 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask that you wait for that item to come up to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Nate, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, or my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
Counsel, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications. We do not have any scheduled public communications this evening. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Johnston sanitary sewer lining improvements, Pioneer Parkway project, and Consider Resolution number 25-190, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost, consider construction bids, and Consider Resolution number 25-191, making award of contract, and Consider Resolution number 25-192, approving construction contract and bond. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:02. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. On July 23rd, the city received bids for Johnston sanitary sewer lining improvements Pioneer Parkway project. The project will consist of a UV cured lining of the sanitary sewer trunk main located along Pioneer Parkway, where we have tree roots have started to enter the joints on the pipe, creating flow restrictions and capacity issues. This project will span from basically 62nd down to Greendale Road along Pioneer Parkway. The engineer, we did receive one bid. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $433,118. The low bidder was Hydro Clean LLC at $344,664.95, which is approximately about 20% underneath the estimate. Staff at the engineer would recommend awarding the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
If the council have any questions?
No, I do a quick question. Hydro Clean, have they done work for us before?
Yeah, we've used them to either jet plug sewers or use them to clean sanitary sewer lines. They're a very well-known company here in the DuBois Metro.
Okay.
About one of three specialized companies that do this type of work. So that's why I believe we've only received one bid, so.
Okay.
Doesn't matter. Go for it.
So, this is, are we, is this something we're intending to do citywide, or is this, there are unique situations that kind of led us to do, to do this segment of the, to do this to the trunk main?
Yeah, this is, it's a unique situation. We've got the large silver maples that line Pioneer Parkway.
Yeah, okay.
And over the years, they've, they've found their way into the joints, so this will seal those joints in order to keep them, keep them out.
So this is kind of a maintenance, preventative maintenance thing?
Right.
Something we've identified it, but it's kind of unique to that part of the...
We've had some backups or some, some restrictions in the pipes. We've had to go out and perform maintenance on a few times, so this is a way to kind of fix that without having to have reoccurring maintenance.
And is it, does it, is our utility, sewer utility covers the cost of this? Is that, that's what the funding source is for this?
Yes, this will come out of operations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Two questions. One technical, Matt, kind of both are technical. The first of which is, any roots that are currently in those joints, do they get eliminated or rooted out first?
Yeah, we'll get those cleared out of there prior to putting the lining in.
And then, how long can we anticipate that this lining would last?
The lining, it's, it's structural, just like the pipe strength, so it'll last 50-plus years.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Any other questions for Matt? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:05. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution number 25-190?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a resolution, or do we have a motion to approve Resolution number 25-191?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution number 25-192?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, Consider Resolution number 25-195, approving the preliminary plat for the enclave at Wooded Point.
I'm not Jacob, but I am here to talk to you about, about this plat. So while Cindy's bringing that, thank you. While Cindy's bringing that up, I'll just get started here. So the enclave at Wooded Point, as many of you are probably aware, was a project that was previously approved. The preliminary, thank you Cindy, the preliminary plat was originally approved in April of 2022. And during that time, the Army Corps stopped issuing 401 and 404 permits pending the outcome of Supreme Court case. So because that was outside of their control, our code provides a provision that we can administratively approve the first extension request for a plat, which staff did at that time. That extension for the preliminary plat and subsequent construction drawings, which also had been already approved by the council, expired in April of this year, April 18th of this year. Now during that time, in the spring, I guess I'll just say, the ownership of that property transferred a couple times. So it was owned and held by a via bank for amount of time, and then fairly recently, actually, just earlier, mid-July, was transferred to J.J. Larson Properties LLC. And so the applicant for this request, for the preliminary plat for the enclave at Wooded Point, is J. Larson Homes LLC. So effectively, what is in front of you, and I'm happy to walk through it, essentially is reapproving, if you will, the project that was previously approved there. There really are not any substantial changes to the layout. As you're aware, work was already occurring on the site previously, some grading, lots of tree removal previously occurring, hold up here, sorry, during that, that time. And then, of course, progress had halted and sat for a bit. And now, under new ownership, they are asking for approval effectively of that, of that same plat. A couple things I will just point out. So again, no, no requested changes to any of the existing zoning. The street configuration So they are proposing to do this project in two phases. Phase one, I know it's a little hard to see in the blue here, but phase one is this section, which is adjacent to 86th Street. And this is 70th, Northwest 70th, on the north side, on the top side of your screen. There is a connecting street, Northwest Creekside Drive, that effectively runs through the development, circles back up and around, and then Northwest 88th Street connects south off of seven, off of our existing 70th. So this area and this dash line on this side is intended to be phase one. This includes Outlet Y, which is for stormwater detention purposes. It is intended to be effectively a dry basin that is, as was previously designed and approved, as well as Outlet Z on the south side here of the development. That is intended to be a wet pond. And then other public, proposed public streets throughout. So single-family detached intention lots, and then also lots with opportunity of buy attached homes. And again, that is the same idea, the same arrangement as the originally approved plat, which has now expired. Jacob has it outlined in the staff report, but obviously there were, there are several buffers required per our code throughout this project. He has outlined those. Again, there are no proposed changes, and primarily, that is on the north and this west side. I will also point out that when the property to the south was developed originally, there was a development agreement regarding trail, which deferred the trail essentially at that time to the north side of the drainage way. So it effectively puts it into this, into this plat. And that appears the same on this set of plans as well. Tree removal, we were told at the Planning Commission meeting by the applicant, the substantial tree removal that we've all seen has occurred there is effectively all of the tree removal. There's a little bit potentially of cleanup of some of the underbrush scrubby, a little bit in a few places, but that question was asked at Planning Commission, and effectively, most of the tree removal has, has already occurred. Obviously, we already have existing trail along 70th. Sidewalk will be required along 86th, as well as all of, both sides of all of the public streets within the development. The specifics for the buffers and the tree quantities are also identified there. And again, that does not represent a change from the previous approval. Are there any general questions I can try to answer?
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, I do. Lot D, up on the north corner up there, that's, if I can remember, if I do remember correctly, that's supposed to be a commercial thing that still stays?
It is still zoned commercial. That's correct.
Okay.
And the, the one thing I should have mentioned is that Outlet W is the area that was identified for park dedication purposes. That was as it was before, and that is still the intention.
Okay, okay. The second question is, this was approved in 2022, and since then, our code has been updated. That's a new, new thing they're asking, will that still meet our new code updates?
It does. The one thing I would notice, which wasn't directly a result of our code update, is that the state has legislatively changed stormwater requirements in that time, actually, to a bit of a lesser standard. But they are not proposing to make any modifications to what was already approved. So, but yes, good question. Councilman Ready, it is, it is still compliant with all of our standards.
That's all I have.
I would also note, just for the good of cause, at, at the Planning Commission meeting and immediately prior to that, we did receive a few comments from the public. And at the commission meeting, most of those were related to tree removal, and also some concern about would it be challenging to be able to make a left-hand turn out of this development and on to 70th?
I have a question, Mayor. Outlet, you mentioned that Outlet W is park set aside? Is that correct?
Part of it. So the actual outlot size is 3.3 acres and change. The usable flat and dry area is just under an acre, which it does, does slightly exceed our calculation for what is required for parkland dedication with, with these counts. So by, by the math, it works.
It looked, it looked like a challenge for a park, but, okay, got it. I understand that the trail, the trail that's required on the south side of the property in both phases, will the eight-foot trail be put in under phase one and the remainder put in under phase two?
I believe it will be installed in phases. And also, I would just note that the previous approved construction drawing showed that trail as eight feet throughout, which isn't necessarily what we would do today. And so Public Works had been looking, there are a couple places where the width and constructability are kind of a concern, so it will remain eight, but it will be expanded to 10 where it can. And it's, throughout, I should note that it is in 20-foot wide easements, so.
Thank you. Other questions for Rose?
Mayor, I do.
Hills is wanting to comment. Yeah.
Oh, and there is a representative of the applicant online, apparently.
Rose, one of, when this initially came up, there, there was a question at one point in time, and perhaps those were the numbers that you alluded to from the Army Corps, but I, I believe you were kind of talking about the stream at the top that fell into those permissions or permits. But there was discussion at one point about the Outlet Z pond and just the stability or integrity of the dam there from a development perspective. How, do we know if that is, or has been examined recently? And I guess my, my further question is, how often do those dams need to be inspected, if at all?
Not sure I know the answer to the last question, if I'm completely honest. The notes that we have are that the improvements, and I'll let the engineer who's online address this more, that those improvements have been verified by the DNR to not increase the hazard level of that dam.
Okay.
I'll default to their engineer for any of the technical pieces of that.
All right, thank you.
Melissa, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, Melissa Hills with Civil Engineering Consultants, 2486th Street in Urbendale. Let's start with the, the question on the, the dam. The, the dam was part of the 401, 404 permit that we had to do, and, you know, we went through a review process with DNR and Army Corps to get that permitting. And so that dam is covered under that permit. Also, I wanted to address the parkland dedication and clarify that Outlet W is not part of the parkland dedication. It's actually Lot D that we are dedicating and, and giving to the city for parkland. And Lot D has a clear, cleared area that is adjacent to the trail on 70th Street. And there's about an acre of ground there that is level and would be available for park amenities. And I think the only item that we had any objection to with the staff comments was installing, installing the 10-foot trail versus the eight-foot trail. And our, our reasoning for that is that putting that 10-foot trail inside a 60-foot right-of-way doesn't give us ample room to install, or to have water main and hydrants. It makes putting in those hydrants very difficult with only having four and a half foot from the curb to the edge of the bike trail.
I need some clarification on, on which area, Melissa, you're talking about with regard to an eight-foot trail. I know we were speaking about on the south side of that property earlier, and, and the dimensions that you're giving suggest a different location.
Yeah, the, the, the problem with the eight-foot trail is only along where we're in the Northwest 88th Street right-of-way, as shown on our plans, that north-south street in the middle. But along the south side of the property, it's, it's not an issue. It's, it's just an issue where we are trying to install water main and, and the trail in that same right-of-way. And it gets to be an issue for fire hydrants to keep that out of that trail
So Melissa, what is proposed there, then?
We'd like to keep that as an eight-foot trail, just on, at least on Northwest 88th Street, to better accommodate the wa, the fire hydrants. And then we don't have to do the 90-degree bend fire hydrants versus the standard fire hydrants. And I think Public Works might agree with that. I don't know.
Mayor and counsel, I apologize. In my notes, I had obviously flipped D and W, so I apologize for that. And Melissa is right. My conversation with Brody in Public Works is that in this section, which is what she's referring to, they are okay with eight feet. It's just the rest of the pieces that we do want to go to a 10-foot cross-section. And it, the development agreement previously puts all of that forth, but it doesn't call out a dimensional standard, so it didn't say eight-foot or 10-foot or some other thing. So in that, along the 88th Street right-of-way, staff is agreeable to that eight-foot trail section.
And Melissa, if I understand you correctly, you're saying you're, you're proposing 10-foot everywhere else?
Yeah, I believe we're, I haven't talked to the developer, but I believe he's okay with that.
And, and I want some clarification, Mayor. Everywhere else is that south bordering trail? Is that what you were referring to, both?
Starting behind on the south side of Lot 18, all the way over to Lot 30.
Okay.
Right in here.
Melissa, I have a question, different question. Are you done with that? Okay. Can you clarify me again, Lot, Outlet W and Lot D? I thought you said Lot D was a commercial and still stays. Outlet D was a park. Now Melissa says Outlet D is the park.
It is, it is still zoned that way.
It is, it is zoned commercial, but it is the intent to dedicate Lot D to the city for parkland. And that does include a, a flat area that's approximately 0.92 acres adjacent to Northwest 70th Street and the creek. That's flat enough ground that you could actually put some improvements there, whether it be something along the trail there or some play equipment or, you know, whatever, whatever the city chooses. But there is some area there that would be usable for park ground.
Okay, yeah, I think I understand what you're saying, Melissa, but I'm just curious. The map that Rose showing here, it says C2. Explain to me, Rose, how does, how does this work?
It, it, park would still be a permit, could still be allowable there. It doesn't require any kind of rezoning.
A commercial, like if commercial center could be a park?
Yes. And as I said, I misspoke earlier. I had the letters of my outlots in my notes.
I understand. I'm looking at what you're showing me right now. C2, that is Lot...
That is.
Lot D, right. That is Lot D.
Correct. It essentially is Lot D.
I'm curious. I'm trying to understand here. So just from my understanding, a commercial entity is like you're putting some kind of a retail shop or something like that versus they're dedicating it as a park. So how does that equate, how does that zoning come here? How does?
This zoning has been in place. This is not a, was not a request made by the developer even previously.
Okay.
I mean, it was a rezoning that has occurred, but this was the location of the park before, to my knowledge.
Okay.
And it can be used for that purpose. I mean, the developer could choose to dedicate parkland somewhere else if he chose to, but, but this is his choice.
And the Lot W, that's your seat?
That would essentially be right here.
Where now? Where's the mouse?
It would essentially be right here. I can go back to the plat. I've just...
Okay, okay. And what would Lot W be now?
It's for stormwater purposes.
Okay.
I would just say, I don't know why that red, the kind of the north corner there is zoned as C2 because it's so heavily wooded. You'd have to take out so many trees, and I'm not sure we would be that, first of all, I'm not sure there's the land, it's heavily wooded, it's probably very sloopy. There's a creek that runs through there. I don't, I don't really understand why it was ever zoned C2.
And that was my question. Initially, I was trying to think.
I think it's a good question. Yeah, it doesn't, to me, that's, you know, so I don't think it would ever be developed as commercial. I'm not, you know, and, and so keeping it as wooded, I think, is preferable. It kind of provides a buffer into the neighborhood, so. I don't, I don't, it's not like we're losing, by having it be parkland, we're losing some piece of land that would be particularly beneficial from a commercial standpoint.
I'm okay either way, but I'm just trying to clarify. C2 means commercial.
Right, right. No, exactly right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, thank you.
For the good of the cause, I don't know the reason why, but it was zoned C2 in 2021. I don't know why, but...
Rose, I'm just curious. When developers dedicate a piece of land for park purposes, is there any conversation with our Parks Director on whether or not that's an appropriate place for a park?
I, I don't know. My notes indicate we've asked your opinion. I don't know if we did this time. It may have been a carryover from the last time. Truthfully, I don't know. So I don't want to put Jeff on the spot, although I am. I know, I mean, we send it out as part of the development review to all departments, but my note in the file was that, at the time, which may have been under the previous direction and department, it was.
I, I think that raises a good kind of policy kind of question.
Yeah.
In the sense of, you know, the developer has, does the developer have the option of either giving us land, whether we want the land or not, or do we, or does the city reserve the right to sort of say, okay, you got to dedicate a certain amount of property and you either, or you can cut us a check, and we, we don't really view this as an appropriate place for a park, so we would prefer the check.
Our code provides either, either option.
But at the, is the option to the developer, or is it, does the city?
I mean, it's ultimately the city, because you don't have to accept something, right? It's just like a, a street lot. Eventually, when the final plat is done and all of the improvements are done, the city will be asked to accept those public improvements and the street lots, and if it, there's a lot for a park or something. But to your point, that discussion should happen long, long, long before we would ever, we would ever get to that. And today, our internal process, when we receive these... And today, our internal process, when we receive these development applications, they're circulated throughout for comment. And obviously, depending on those comments, then additional conversation if it's warranted.
Yeah. I guess in the future, what I would ask, Rose, is that when we have parkland that's being dedicated like this, that we have something very specifically in the report that tells us whether or not that that's something that we find desirable. I mean, I'm, like Tom and many of us here, we're pretty familiar with that corner. And I'm trying to imagine a park there. You've got trail on both sides, which is good. But right on the intersection of 86th and 70th just seems a little weird.
Well, it doesn't, it's maybe not right at the intersection.
Well, I know. It's in a little bit, but.
Yeah. But if it's been cleared, and it's all, you know, if they cleared it purposely for the idea that they were going to give it, with the expectation that A, they wanted, they were going to give it to us, and B, we were going to accept it, then it's hard to know, kind of, you know, was that, where is that? Was that something that the previous developer had communicated with previous staff? I mean, this is, this is a classic example of everybody who was involved in this project three years ago is no longer around, right? Other than Dave, is, sort of, but Dave was probably not the direct person. So anyway, the process could be a little.
Just not for purposes of tonight, but for future purposes. Are there any other questions for Rose or for the engineer?
For either one, what are the dimensions then of the proposed streets through either 80, both 88th, 89th? Just so I know what those widths are.
All of the rights-of-way within the development, the rights-of-way width is 60 feet. Northwest 88th Street, so our Southerly Street coming in here, as well as Northwest Creekside Drive. East from Northwest 88th. They will be 29-foot wide paving. The others will be 26. So this will, again, all the same right-of-way width, but what is called Street Lot A or Lot A here would be 29-foot of paving. Northwest Creekside from this intersection east would also be 29. The remainder would be 26. And I should have pointed out, there will, of course, be a temporary turnaround between the phases for that street because there would be too many units without it. So, and that's shown here on your slide as, as the temporary turnaround. So until they started constructing in the second phase.
Rose, hypothetically, if we wanted a 10-foot trail on 88th, what, what means would council have to do so? I mean, ultimately, the logical thing to me is, let's go with a wider than 60-foot right-of-way. Is there, is there something else there that I'm missing that would have to go into place?
I think in the existing right-of-way, and Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong, in the existing right-of-way and where the other infrastructure is already planned and the separation between all of those things, I think the comment and what Brody had discussed with me is that 8-foot, it gets real tight without that, as Melissa said. So probably that would have to be a bit wider right-of-way, which means we will, the developer will lose some depth in lots if that were to occur. I have not had that conversation with the developer or with Melissa, so I don't, I don't know that. I know, you know, again, to your point, as has already been stated, that this is effectively the layout that was before. And I don't think it was, at least in any notes or comments that we had from before, that that was a question mark, the 8-foot, so.
Okay.
There is one other option. You could get a trail easement to gain separation from your utilities.
Okay.
If desired.
So you could keep the 60-foot easement?
60-foot right-of-way.
Right-of-way, and then do a trail easement next to it, to the east?
Have to be to the east. That's where it is now.
Yeah.
May I interject something?
Sure.
On that note? We can't put the trail outside of the right-of-way without having to elongate those twin culverts that go under the road. If we have to go outside of the right-of-way or make the right-of-way bigger, that would, in effect, cause those culverts to have to be longer and the grading to have to be revised and more trees to be taken out. So putting the trail outside of the right-of-way, at least along that section where we're putting the twin culverts, would be a problem. And we, you know, if it has to be a 10-foot trail, then I think we would do it in that 60-foot right-of-way and just, you know, the hydrants would have to be the alternate hydrant layout. But grading outside of that right-of-way for the trail would not only be more expensive for us in terms of having to install longer culverts, but also less safe because it would change the slope on that side of the trail, and I think would be more of a safety issue.
Melissa, let me ask you a question. If it is just the hydrants that you're needing to avoid, could you push the hydrants in a easement on the backside of the trail?
I think that's a possibility, yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. So this all, this discussion on trail width is definitely something that we need to pay attention to. And that's exactly why we're having a master plan on our trails, especially as they lead off into the northwest annexed area. This, this will all be something that we need to get, get some professionals to explain to us what's happening. Now, we all know there's a lot more motorized bicycles on our trail. They're heavier. They can go faster. In this case, the one, the one thing that makes me feel okay about the 8-foot width, and again, I am not a traffic engineer, is the fact that they're going to be adjacent to a street with a lot of cars and a lot of driveways. I would hope that at that time, people are going at a slower rate of speed. When they get to the trail that is on the south side of this property, where there's not as many things that are crossing, I think speeds could ramp up. It would be great to have 10-foot trails everywhere, of course. And then I would, and if we're going to take easements for more trail, I'm going to want more easements for more trees, and then that gets to be a bigger problem. So in this case, for this issue, I'm, at present, I'm okay with the proposal that I've heard.
Okay.
Other questions, Council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-195?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion? Send your vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Kope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, Consider Resolution Number 25-197, approving the site plan for Windsor Fitness located at 8700 Thomas Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a requested amendment to the approved site plan for Windsor Fitness, 8700 Thomas Avenue. The site plan was approved earlier this year, I believe, in February. So city code provides some specific scenarios where the zoning administrator can approve certain amendments to a site plan. As it relates to architectural matters, specifically building materials, it specifies that if the overall change is 5% or less of the building area, the facade area, if you will, and the materials still meet the minimum requirements of the city code, that the zoning administrator could administratively approve that. In this case, that area exceeds 5%. So that is why, why you're seeing this in front of you. I'll just highlight a couple of things and then we can go to the elevations. But you'll notice midway through the staff report, there are a couple of tables. I've got it up on the screen now. The way these are meant to be read, in the top here, you've got, of course, our Class A, B, and C materials, what that minimum requirement is in terms of percentage. And then the next column is, on the north elevation, for example, what was approved on the current site plan. And then what is highlighted there in the red or orange box is what is proposed on this submittal. So for an example, currently on the adopted site plan, the north elevation is made up of 84% Class A materials. The requirement is at least 50. This proposed change is 81%. So in this case, on the north elevation, the percentage of Class A materials is reduced by 3%. The Class B amount is increased by 5%, and the Class C goes down a little. So then continuing reading that table to the right, you'll see two columns for the south elevation, and again, the same format. 88% of the south elevation was approved with Class A materials. This proposed change has 53% Class A materials, a reduction from the 88%, but still exceeding our requirement of 50, and so on. Then the next sort of set, I will say, below are then for the east and west elevations. I'm going to go ahead and skip ahead here. So essentially, the north elevation, which is this elevation here, sort of in the middle of the page, this changes very little, slight amount, slight amount of brick on this elevation. On the south elevation, the primary change, where you see that reduction in Class A, on the approved, most of these sections here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, they show up sort of as the unpatterned. That was brick on the, on the approved renderings. And now it's fiber cement panels, which would be a Class B. So that's where, that is where most of the material change is happening. Also, in some of the banding on this portion of the building, as well as on the east and west, what I call the shorter elevations, same thing where you see this large, the larger expanses of the lighter area. That was a significant amount of brick before, and now it's the fiber cement panels. So again, all of the proposed changes are still code compliant, but they did result in more, greater than a 5% change.
So the thing that I kind of find a little bit of interest in is their naming it CrossFit Merle Hay, which obviously First Amendment allows them to name their business whatever they want. But it's not, it's not on Merle Hay Road, but whatever. Kind of bizarre to me. Because I thought they were calling it Windsor Fitness, but maybe they're calling it something different.
That, that is what the original is. I don't know, to answer your question, Tom, what specifically they're going to call the business. We haven't seen, I don't believe we've seen signed permits or anything yet.
I mean, obviously, that's their right to do it, how they want to do it. It's just, it's kind of. No, but I mean, if you, when you, whatever. And obviously, this is, and that's, this is mainly, the reason it's like this is for us to get an idea what the signage would look like, but they're free to, they're not, they're not bound by whatever. That's, that's, will come through the permit process.
That's correct.
Other questions or comments? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item?
My name is Kurt Ingard. I'm an architect at Studio Mealy. So I was architect on this project. I can answer questions if you have any.
Why is it named CrossFit Merle Hay?
That's, that's a known decision. It wasn't our decision.
And as Tom, or Councilman Kope indicated, that may not be the name ultimately, but anyway.
But he has, he has another gym, and so this is kind of aligning with that, I think. But that's just my speculation.
He has what?
He has another gym.
Oh, okay.
Similar name.
Okay, well, maybe it will be CrossFit Merle Hay.
Before you move too far away, though, can you interpret for a person like me who doesn't look at elevations daily or ever, what's the overall width of this entire structure? And then what's the width of that lot? Just so I can kind of picture that.
We'd have to drum up the floor plans for that in the site plan.
Yeah, is there a dimension on this elevation that I'm, I see, I thought I saw one, obviously for height. I think I see one for depth.
It's the, it's basically the same width it was before.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to picture is how much of that lot is the building taking up? I'm not trying to fault you on your renderings. In fact, they look great. But, but clearly now, I'm just trying to picture that actually in that spot a little bit more. You know, for instance, it seems to portray some wonderful, beautiful grass over on that east side. Well, we know that's a parking lot for Jethro's, or what was Jethro's. And so I'm just trying to get a picture of where that's going to fall.
As you're looking at this elevation here, I can maybe try to describe it.
And that is the north-facing?
The north street frontage elevation.
Okay.
So on the left, there's, how do we pan? So there's an area here, right before you get to the property line. My best guess is it's anywhere 18, 20 feet or so.
Okay.
Maybe a little more. The patio space itself is about 16, 18 feet. And then you have the entire retail space. Through here, there's four retail spaces, two entrances. And then you have the gym space with these sloped rooftops. And then off to the right, from about the building edge over, we have a 20-foot fire lane. And then we have, I think, about seven feet, six, seven feet of lawn landscaping. And then the property line.
Okay.
So it's, it's not up against the property lines.
Very good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Does Council have any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-197?
I move.
Second.
Motion and second discussion? Send your vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Kope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, Consider Approval of Claims in the Amount of $1,686,930.12.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second discussion? Send your vote, please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Kope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. City Administrator Staff Comments, Mike?
I do not have any comments this evening. I do think we have some staff comments this evening.
Staff?
Real quick, just to remind everybody, we do have our second public meeting for the sidewalk program, Phase 3, tomorrow from 5:30 to 6:30, which really includes the North Glen Neighborhood and Johnston Commons area. And then some good news, Des Moines Water Works is going to be paving the trail tomorrow and starting at 6:30 in the morning. There will be a section that they do leave out. There will be a section that they do leave out for the kayak launch that's being constructed. With talking with Jeff, though, the contractor, they've worked together, they're going to gravel that area so that it can still be utilized once the trail's paved. So some good news there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other good news from staff? Seeing none? The council comments. Councilwoman Martin?
About, what was it, two weeks ago, a little more, we had a windstorm. I was out of town. I heard that we had solar panels come off the roof. Do we have an update on that?
We had 24, 22 or 24 panels that moved, and only two made it off the roof. The others were just moved around the roof. So one source solar vendor was out before 8 o'clock in the morning it happened. Within an hour of my reaching out to them, secured everything down, and we've had the roof repaired. It obviously made holes in their rubber roof. That's been repaired. One source is waiting on parts to replace it, so.
Great news.
Right now, the north half of the, the lower, is on the lower roof side, is not operational. The high roof side is operational, so.
Okay.
Generating some power, just not as much as we should be.
Good to know. Thank you. Mayor, I have no other comments.
Councilman Burkhart?
No further comments.
Councilman Cope?
I'll pass. Thank you.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Councilman Evans?
I miss these little bowls of candy. Some days it switch showing up and it's major concern. That's all I have.
Well, I just want to thank staff for all of their support for some of the events that we've had the last couple of weeks. The trip concert Saturday, a week ago, Sat, a week ago Saturday night was absolutely amazing. We had Sunday at the Park yesterday, and I think it was the largest turnout we've ever had for Sunday at the Park, so that was great. We also have the Mayor's Run for Trails coming up this Saturday. And we're hoping to have a good turnout for that. And I've been out shaking some of our local retail businesses down for door prizes, so we, we have some good door prizes to hand out, so. Anyway, lots of good stuff always going on in Johnson. That wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the support of all of our staff, so. So thank you very much for that. With that, we have one remaining item on the agenda, and that is a closed session. Per Iowa Code Section 21.51J, to discuss the purchase of particular real estate, only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental body, the governmental body would have to pay for the property. The minutes and tape recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed.